Good to go.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our new City Hall. We're all very proud to be here. That matches the progress that they've been making as a community, so.
Dear Lord and Father, thank you for the promise to us that where 2, 20, or 100 are gathered, that we are all here in your midst. Lord, we welcome you amongst us today and celebrate the gift of life that you lavished upon all of us. We ask you that you would open our ears and hearts so that we all may hear your voice. As we make decisions today, we seek your guidance, wisdom, and support. Allow us to grow closer together as a group and a community, tighter and stronger together. Amen.
Amen.
Applause to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of June 10, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Your.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the June 10 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
And a motion and second discussion. Lot objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Return to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our regular business items, please step to the microphone, give us your name, address, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner's staff, it's my pleasure, 10 Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, it's my pleasure to be the first public speaker here at our new City Hall, whatever the final cost may be. My question is on item number five, which is the $1.95 million contract with Environmental Design Group for Sandusky Bay Pathway. Three questions when you get to that point. The $1.95 million, is that specifically only for engineering? Does that include any construction costs? Number two, are there estimates for the construction phases? I believe we're going to start first from Spur's force and then work westward. And number three, is there an estimate on how much the TIF is? The TIFs, I think we're going to use maybe two TIFs to do this final project. What are they worth, the TIFs? And for how many years are these TIFs going to be on the books? Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, then we are a delight. Yes, sir. I didn't see you moving there. Sorry, sir.
In regards to the bike path also. My name is Don Shepherd. My address is 1034 Cove Park Boulevard, Sandusky, Ohio. Part of the bike path plan, as I have seen it, will come across my property. I have no doubt that you will eventually take my property, but right now I have clear title to it. This will be the fourth time that my family has been to the City Commission and explained this and showed deeds and title searches. But it doesn't go away now, so I'm sure you're going to take your property away. I'm just suggesting that I'm not going to do anything to make it real easy for you. That we've owned the property since approximately 1960, that it is the only piece of property down there that did not convey into the railroad to support this. I not only have four of my own title searches, I have the title search that was, I guess we're going to be commissioned, that was commissioned by you folks and paid for by the city, that will show that the property in question never transferred into the railroad. Just as a historical moment here, also the two lots at the foot of Ogot Street, the deed says that if ever and whenever those properties stopped being used for railroad purposes, they would automatically revert back to the original heirs, their owners, or assigns. So the railroad, on the day they ran their last train down there, failed to own that property. So they could not sell it to the city. The city then, in my opinion, couldn't possibly vacate it to Tony Ware. But I suppose adverse, might give somebody something there. We have possessed this property. The president of a local title company has said, this is the clearest chain of title he has ever seen. So just letting you know, I'm not saying that I have any way to make it difficult for you, but I really don't want you to build a bike path on my backyard. So, thank you.
Else wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda items? If not, then we are very pleased to have three of our state, three representatives of our state government who have been such critical partners in the process of getting to where we are today and in so many other things that we've been accomplishing in Sandusky lately. And some of them are here, three of them here today, Senator Gaverone and Art is part of that presentation. And then we have a representative of Ohio Treasurer Robert Sprague's office, Pat McCauley. And then Larry Fletcher is here from Lake Erie Shores and Islands, all to address the great success that we recently had and of which we're very proud in winning the 2019 Best Coastal City Award. So I think Senator Gaverone and maybe Representative Art, you're first up. I'll let you decide that.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited to be here, your very first City Commission meeting here in this beautiful new building. This is truly spectacular. You've done a great job, and I'm looking forward to coming to many more meetings here. But it's really exciting that you won Best Coastal Small Town. I mean, it's tremendous, and I'm really looking forward to spending a lot of time this summer and seeing everything that Sandusky has to offer. So thank you very much. I do have a commendation from the Senate.
Thank you, Senator, and I also want to echo the Senator's thoughts. You know, most of us have watched and seen all the vibrant activity going on in Sandusky. It's been going on now for a number of years. But it's even better when you see someone like USA to recognizing what we all sometimes take for granted. But it took a lot of hard work, a lot of synergies going on, and I have a commendation here from the House to actually recognize your efforts and your success.
We've really enjoyed in recent years a tremendous partnership with the state of Ohio, and we're delighted. I think this may be your last trip here as state representative, and we would say that, thank you. All right. Larry Fletcher is also here from Lake Erie Shores and Islands. Quite apt. Larry, that you would be here to talk about the Best Coastal City Award, so we thank you as well.
Absolutely, and a great pleasure to be here also in your first meeting. Congratulations to all of you and all the residents of the city and the city staff for this wonderful facility. Yes, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to add my congratulations to the city of Sandusky and everyone that helped it be named the Best Coastal Small Town. And a number of things had to happen for that to occur. Two of the main things, the nomination had to be received, and that was done through a committee of travel experts that USA Today has, five different travel writers, that nominated the city as one of 20 in this country to have the opportunity then for it to go to the vote. And that's the second big thing that had to happen, is once you get on that list of 20 cities, then it's up to the residents of the community, the business partners, people from across the state, actually, that helped keep Sandusky at or near the top of the voting for the entire run of the contest. And then, as we know, Sandusky was named the Best Coastal Small Town in the country on a list of some very formidable competition. So on behalf of all of us at Lake Erie Shores and Islands, I have a couple plaques that we'd like to present, one which we'll give to the City Commission, perhaps for this room or somewhere in this building. And it says, presented to the city of Sandusky in recognition of being voted Best Coastal Small Town, USA Today's 10 Best Reader's Choice 2019, with a logo that was created for that event. So this is for you and the commission, and we thought it would be appropriate to give one to the city manager for his staff and perhaps to display in your office. Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, we are delighted to welcome Pat McCauley from the office of Ohio Treasurer Bob Sprague, my former colleague, and I will hope you will let him know that the city of Sandusky sends our thanks.
I will definitely do that. On behalf of Treasurer Sprague, congratulations on this great new facility. This is awesome. Shows the progress that Sandusky is making, and it's just wonderful. And of course, for the being the best small coastal town in the United States by USA Today, from your amusement parks, indoor water parks, outdoor water parks, shopping, dining, beating out communities from Texas, Alabama, South Carolina, Michigan, it says a lot about the community and Treasurer Sprague. He's proud of Ohio, he's proud of Northwest Ohio, and he is proud of what Sandusky has done. And he has a proclamation here recognizing that, that I would just like to present. Thank you.
Tax hearing, a public hearing on the 2020 tax budget, and that will be presented by Mr. Soloway, Finance Director. You've got to figure out where everybody is now. Soloway, please.
Just a few brief comments for me, and we'll open it up to the commission and the public. Basically, the purpose of our hearing tonight is to comply with the Ohio Revised Code as part of our annual audit. The Ohio Revised Code requires certain information to be contained in the tax budget, including historical and budget, or historical and budget data. And prior to 2011, the Erie County Budget Commission actually waived this requirement, so this is, you know, starting to become a routine part of our city business now in the June or early July to pass the tax budget. And the, according to the Budget Commission, the main reasons for approving a tax budget is to assist the Erie County Auditor in setting property tax rates to help allocate local government funds and help start planning, the planning process for next year. With that, I just kind of wanted to walk through what our general budget process is here at the city. It's not only governed by Ohio Revised Code, by city charter. According to Section 50 of the city charter, our first draft of the 2020 budget will be presented to City Commission by November 1st. And then the annual appropriation ordinance per Section 51 of the city charter will be passed after the second Monday in January and before the end of March. And with that, just a few things I wanted to point out to both commission and the public is the transparency issue of financial information that you can find on the website. There's a wealth of financial information available. Residents and businesses can take comfort in knowing that we are probably the most transparent political subdivision in Erie County. Some of the information you will find includes our monthly financial reports, our comprehensive annual financial report, our finance committee agenda and minutes, our audit reports. We're also on ohiocheckbook.com through the state treasurer's office. And just recently, a few years ago, we started doing a sort of a progress update report with the issue eight funds, so those are also available. Those are all my comments. With that, we'll open it up to commission.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Public hearing, if there's anyone present who wishes to address the cutting of the tax budget, please step to the microphone and share with us your thoughts. Microphone, I will declare the public hearing closed. Number of pieces of legislation that staff has recommended to us for our consideration to make a motion to accept those communications.
I move.
Motion and second discussion. Lot objection, motion be approved. Consent agenda, commissioners, are there any items that you would like to have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the agenda? Then Mrs. Crassier, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is the second reading. It's an approval to request reimbursement of funds from the Erie County Solid Waste Management District for the citywide cleanup and yard waste drop-off events. Item B is approval of the tax budget for calendar year 2020. Item C is a change order with Barnes Nursery for demolition of 624 Camp Street, a change in the timeframe only for that project. Item D is a subrecipient agreement with the Erie County Health Department for their 211 Information and Referral Service. Item E is a subrecipient agreement with the Erie County Senior Center for their Meals on Wheels program. Item F is a subrecipient agreement with OGO for their mobile food pantry and market. And item G is a liquor permit transfer for Jack's Bar located at 123 Market Street.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda.
And a motion and second discussion. Commissioner, would you poll the commissioners first on the motion?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Commissioner, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Small Business Assistance Grant Program to Custom Sign and Design LLC in relation to the property located at 1030 Hayes Avenue, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Mr. Brady?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension under rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
And a motion and second discussion. Who can explain this particular piece of legislation to the commission and public? Vasco?
All, presentation, just to walk through, based on the background of the company. This company was formed in 2018 after acquiring the assets of the Ability Works Incorporated. Lineage with customers including ODOT. Of the two parcels, which are currently two buildings, photos of the two properties, they're sort of a front office building. Bridge, in terms of the scope of work, they're looking at electrical upgrades to operate the sign-making equipment, connecting the two buildings through a breezeway enclosure, 10 by 20 breezeway. Powder and table, as well as landscaping and exterior improvements. Project total, all in cost, based on existing estimates, is just under. Financing, which has been secured. Customer assistance was brought to the Economic Development Incentive Committee. And finish up in October. We did buffer the grant agreement a little bit.
Chairman.
Mr. Brady?
It's the kind of, it's the kind of opportunity that the city relishes, and I certainly applaud Mr. Krable. Exactly appropriate for dollars that we're spending. We would do this for anyone that took the kind of chance that they're taking. They're improving a building, they're hiring people, they're buying equipment, they're going to be performing construction work, which is going to, which is going to return dollars to our tax base. This is a win for everyone. I'm pleased that they're here asking for this, and I'm pleased to be able to vote for it.
Questions or comments, commissioners? Commissioner, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pro Supply Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the CDBG fiscal year 2018 demolition project, number one, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14.
Second discussion. Commissioner, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with the Manic and Smith Group Incorporated of Mami, Ohio, for the Meg Street Reconstruction and Multi-Use Path Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Ms. Twine? And a motion and second discussion. Ms. Twine, could you walk us through this legislation, please?
Three, Mr. President, this project is something that we originally applied for a grant. I'm going to look at everything. Of that $340,000, $23,000. Questions, this is just for the design phase? The total project cost, the total amount for the total project?
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Item number four is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Pierce Street reconstruction and resurfacing project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance
with. Second discussion. Mr. Brady?
If Mr. Klein would share with the commission and the audience the parameters of this, where, what sections of Pierce Street we're dealing with, and point about the two different types of surface conditions there. types of surface conditions there.
Questions or comments? Touch with the engineer from the 1970s, I might have a word with him or her about those concrete streets that continue to plague us today. Perhaps she'll be retired by then, Mr. Klein, but perhaps not. Questions or comments? Anthony, Mrs. Chris, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington? Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That resolution is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional design services with Environmental Design Group, LLC, of Akron, Ohio, for the Sandusky Bay pathway, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Ms. Lloyd? Motion and second, discussion. Ms. Klein, I'm going to turn it over to you, I assume, or get lateral to someone else. Big project, lots of important questions.
What we're looking at for the acquisition portion of it? With this is not only the acquisition, but we obviously Out to Mr. Schoninger.
Through, thank you Director Klein, and through the Commission President to the rest of the Commission, the question about the TIFs or the availability of funding for this phase, there are three TIFs that we're looking to potentially support some of these funds. The most certain of those TIFs is the TIF that is on the Phase Two of the Cedar Point Sports Center project, which over the life of 30 years, based on where it looks like that's coming in, will pay at least about $15 million into that fund. And so ultimately, there is an upcoming piece for the infrastructure for that project that will come before this Commission, probably later this summer. There is the first phase of the design for the landing portion of the project, which Aaron mentioned earlier, and is actually being designed currently. And then, potential interest paid to potentially bond some of that upfront, as well as the share that goes to the schools, which is 10% of that. So even assuming that that TIF were to cover all of this design phase, which is eligible, you'd still be looking at a pretty significant amount left over for construction before we tapped into other funds, and then, not included as a potential source for this project, but certainly for the construction of later phases of the pathway, is if you remember when we passed issue A, the portion of the admissions tax by Cedar Point, they asked and we committed to set aside about half of that admissions tax towards what they called catalytic infrastructure projects. And then we undertook the comprehensive plan the next year in 2015, and then recommended in the budget the following year to set aside a portion of that admissions tax each year for construction of the pathway. That will provide a significant source of funding for projects, but not design and engineering, but to help cover the gaps in addition to philanthropy. Obviously, we have secured the $500,000 commitment from Whitman Weber. We've had really productive conversations with other philanthropic organizations, and also believe that state and federal sources that are available for these types of projects can be tapped into as well. But so those are sort of the outside the TIF funding, but the landing piece alone could cover this or backstop it, and is a certain piece of funding. There's also some funding left in the Chesapeake TIF, and because it touches the waterfront, we believe those funds could be set aside, or that will be unlikely to be necessary. And then finally, the least certain are the various parcels that were included in what we sort of loosely refer to as the downtown and Battery Park TIF. There are several projects, including the City Hall, the FIC building, the BGSU project, several other projects downtown, including the Marketplace, which was just completed, as well as any future development of Battery Park. That while we can't speak to those because those projects aren't online and have yet to be appraised by the county auditor, we know that those will be well-funded over the years and ultimately do this. But I'd say the most certain form of the TIF funding that can help to take this out is that landing piece of funding, which we're using as a backstop and hope to replace as quickly as possible with other funds, so that we can make sure as much of that goes into the construction of these trails throughout the city.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Commissioners, Ms. Klein? Between you, Mr. Klein, and you, Mr. Haber, I want to make sure that we do address someone who spoke earlier, the property owner. This is the first that I remember hearing about this particular issue. I know it's a very complicated, larger puzzle, given all the different parcels, and this is something that you're going to encounter when you're trying to do something new in an old city that has a lot of history and a lot of land transactions. If I'm understanding you correctly, what the process is that, and I don't want to single out the gentleman, but directly to have conversations with folks, and it would be as a result of those conversations that we would see where that goes, whether it's an offer of acquisition or vital issues are, we're not going to be able to litigate those commission meeting, but I don't want us to litigate it on court, I mean to sort all those out. But is that generally the process that we'd be following? Questions or comments? Mr. Brady?
I intend to live, to be a very old man, but my My question My question to you, my question to you is, what is the timeframe on this pathway? Is this going to happen in my lifetime? Now, there's a longer question. According to Mr. Murray, not. Are we looking at, are we looking at five years, 10 years? I always thought this was going to be a long time, but is, you know?
Certain pieces of it as well.
And I'm not pressing you to hurry up. It was always my expectation that this was going to take, you know, this was not something that was going to be squeezed into a year, two years, three years. And this is going to take a while to do.
I'm going to hold him to that.
But through the Commission President, I saw your father looked like he was here today, and looked like he could have ridden a bike here as well.
The question is, can you ride a bike now?
Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Chairman?
Poole?
Just a couple. I just want to be clear. The Pier Track portion of this is not part of this contract, or it is? This is a extremely large project, starting at one end of the city and going to the other. Shepherd was pretty clear about acquisition. I don't want to litigate it, but at this point, to my Commissioner friends, do you plan on taking this man's property? Is this pathway that node, since we already have going up straight up action, do we intend to spend the money? That's if we're not prepared to do that, and we don't have true funding for all these additional additional, this additional extremely costly, then there's little point. All the other things involved in that. Project, I believe, would be better off if we broke it down into pieces. Allow us some flexibility about this, because $2 million committed to a design that we already know is significantly odd, but likely to not ever come to fruition. And that's so clear.
Let me answer part of that, at least from my perspective. First of all, projects that we've undertaken, we landed in this building today when no one said that was possible, when many people said that was simply impossible for many, many years. To that, we will not be able to continue the transformation of Sandusky into So I think the ambitious scale of it is warranted. I will say that I think it's premature to answer the question that has been posed. I may have a different answer, or the process of negotiations may yield a different answer. Body, legislative body, we're able to answer those one by one. And to allow the process to unfold and see where it goes.
And from east to west, we're, I would guess that we're going to be dealing with 100 different properties, are we not? And I think that it's, I think that it's somewhat foolhardy for us to stop the progress of this pathway with just, with just one parcel somewhere in the middle saying, "Not on my land." Maybe there's a way to duck around this person's land. Maybe there's a way, as Mayor Murray said, to negotiate a way around this land. But, you know, to stop the process, because one, you know, one person says, "Not in my backyard," I don't think we'd, I don't think we'd ever progress as a city if we, if we took that attitude.
Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Over a year ago, when Mr. Harris was our law director, he told us, he sat in that chair and said that the law department was undertaking, discussing what the, and I can't remember the exact network of contacting the neighbors and the people who live in Sandusky. So by this time, we should have a preliminary idea for each of those property owners along there. And at the time, the discussion was really about the pier track node that runs, runs essentially from U.N. to behind the current police station. And that's probably, what, 15 properties? What I'm saying is committing $2 million, when we recognize that there's a good possibility that one node can never happen, it is not in our interest to taxpayers for 30 years worth of bonds to pay for information that we don't need. There's no reason the staff could not have, if they haven't done so. I put you on the spot since your predecessor, predecessor told us that he was doing this. We should know now what the trouble spots are, and I'm quite certain that Mr. Shepherd is not the only person. There's at least one property in Cleveland Road, backside of the Cleveland Road area where the pier track run through. Take it, if we give him $2 million, he'll be happy to give you the property. Lot of three, and this is someone that owns property there, and I was told that by the property owner three days ago. So due diligence on the part of staff ahead of time, long before we get into these serious negotiations, needs to be done. Most progressive cities, they build these, they plan these paths and build them as they can. But the idea, I won't commit $2 million on the front end of a project that we may, much of it may never happen. If you want to break it down into pieces, be happy to go for it. I do think we need a bike path. I like riding motorcycles, bicycles, and motorcycles. And it would be nice to All the money you have tied up in here, it could be used to improve the lives of citizens of Sandusky. When I start counting the heads of who's going to ride their bicycle on this path, I'm not seeing a whole bunch of citizens in town, starting at the landing, riding across town.
Chairman.
Lockhart.
I, I agree with Commissioner Poole's point. There should be some due diligence, because yes, there could be one property that, that may be, we may be able to go around, but then we never know. There may be 15, or 10, or 20 properties that we may have to go around. So due diligence is the proper thing to do. I'd like to ask, has the staff talked to any of the property owners along the way?
Through the Commission President, yes, we have. And this process, though, is indeed set up to answer those questions. This is the process by which we provide more detail. But I have certainly spoken to property owners. I think, Michelle, you wanted to speak to that from the Environmental Design Group team?
Michelle, why don't you step up to the microphone, so you can be heard. Afternoon. Michelle Johnson with Environmental Design Group. So the one thing that we have promised the city all the way through is that we would always be looking for additional funding sources for these, all of these projects. Landing Park, we are successful in getting $500,000 from ODNR, which was more of a park-like setting, so that was a good funding source for that. And those monies are coming through right now. For the pathway, because it's a little bit more urbanized, it's not so ideal for ODNR dollars. And instead, we are embarking on a very time-consuming journey with planning and engineering to apply for a build grant, which is the old Tiger program with the federal government. So with that, with that intention, we have now declared a federal nexus, which means that we have shown intent, that we would ideally like to bring in quite a bit of money, $14 million to be exact, from the feds. So because we have declared that intent, with the intent that federal dollars may be used in the process, we then have to follow the federal process of acquiring property. So we are now at a point where we are not, knowing that we are trying to get federal dollars, we are not able to just contact the property owners as the city, even as the design consultant. We actually have to follow the entire right-of-way procedure, even though we aren't applying for design dollars, because we are applying for design, no, I'm sorry, we are applying for construction dollars. We have to follow their process. And the city did that upfront, in the way that you bid out the project, in the way that you selected the consultant, in the way that the scoring was done. They actually were proactive, and all of the firms that are on board with our contracts are all ODOT-qualified. So we have kind of checked that box now, and I don't remember the previous conversation about the city reaching out, but we can't do that anymore. Knowing that we are seeking those federal funding and have declared that, we now have to follow the ODOT process, which is part of the federal highway process. So the right-of-way acquisition negotiation is pre-qualified. Our right-of-way plans are pre-qualified. Design, every single industry, all the way down to geotech, has to be an ODOT-qualified firm, which we all are, because now we have this federal nexus that has been claimed. So we can't go basically grassroots anymore. We have to follow that process.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just, so I'm not all up on all this stuff, but if I'm clear, you're saying that we are now not allowed to ask who will give us an easement or sell their property based upon?
You just have to follow their formal procedures on how we ask.
Okay. Can you, can you just give me a little bit more detail on exactly what that procedure is?
Sure. Yeah. So there's, it's a very, the right-of-way manual from ODOT is quite significant, but it lays out step by step exactly how we have to contact, per the Ohio Revised Code, the property owner notification letters, whether or not we need that property or not. Those letters have to go out once a month. The, the notification of property owners' rights are one of the first things that get sent out. The options for easement, for lot splits, for donation, for it all. I don't want to say it's very clear, because it's a very large packet that gets sent out, so it takes some digging. But it is, you know, like any federal or state process, it is a very clear process that we have to follow, follow. And O.R. Colon, who is our subconsultant for right-of-way acquisition negotiation, is one of the state's leaders in that, and so they are committed to following that process. So for better or for worse, we have to rely on the pre-qualified firm to go through and do that. And all those conversations are part of that. Donation, which happens a lot, easements, lot splits, there's many conversations that happen with every single property owner. The difference, though, with that federal nexus is that it has to happen through the pre-qualified firm. We can't just have our law department now reaching out on their own accord, because it's a very, very formal process and a lot of documentation that goes with it.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I just want to point out the federal nexus, we did not start this process with a federal nexus. Now that we're locked into this, I suppose we will. But I, as a Commissioner, treat my neighbors better than that. Using the law to find ways to take people's property. Feds made me do it. The discussion about where we're going to run this bike path, what we were prepared to do with, to and with our neighbors their money, how much we're prepared to spend to legal fees, it should have been discussed at the earliest stages. Unless you got the federal nexus the first day you came here, that's where I stand on, on that concept of using the process. Just that the concept of various TIFs to cover this. I listened to what you guys, what folks said, and it's lots of assurances about paying is going to be potential future lottery winnings, which is what I analogy. Specifics of how much these TIFs might make in the future is not the same thing as this is, as investors will look and see when they decide whether or not to buy these bonds, whether or not we can $30 million, $15 million over 30 years? Is that what they, what you, that's what we project, at least we expect to have, and I accept that number as such, but it represents about $2 million. The money isn't it spent on what they're doing out there, not just on what we're doing here?
Commission President, that TIF fund, which is one of three TIF funds that could contribute to this, will yield about $15 million in gross revenue. And then a portion will go towards the infrastructure, a portion's already going to cover the design of the first phase of the pathway, Landing Park, and then a portion could cover this. But we estimate that our portion of that, after all those are paid down, will be around $8 to $10 million remaining specifically for construction, after all design, and after all contributions to the Sports Center project itself.
Potential future dollars, which is, I accept your, your numbers. Again, I'm not going to support this, because it's just too much. Down and treated them fairly, so I'm not in favor.
Question, I'm sorry. Additional questions or comments?
Chairman, are there any alternative routes considered in this project?
First, Meg Street. How all this will be funded? Sure. This is a big project. It goes on for many years. Have we had great success in tests that we've achieved lately? Only adds to our ability as a trustworthy partner with the state and with the federal government to be able to spend for the public. I don't think just because it's complex, we should blanch at that. If we did, we'd still be in the Questions that will come at us as this enormous project unfolds. Would you pull the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. And that concludes our regular items of business, and we turn the meeting over to
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, audience and staff. I'll start with the donations. First, the Salloway family is donating one box containing 250 sheets of unused staples, mailing labels for use in the customer accounting office. The box of 250 sheets is valued at $60. I'd ask for a motion to consider that donation.
Second, without objection, both should be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
New and old business administration. The city is in receipt of an economic development transfer, or TRACS, from Noble Exes LLC. The permit is coming from Clata's Irish Pub in Columbus, Ohio. When completed, this property will see an approximate $400,000 investment. Will create an estimated 10 to 15 new jobs and upwards of $25,000 in tax revenue annually. It's requested that the city commission by motion, provide authorization to sign off on the TRACS transfer form indicating the city endorses and acknowledges this transfer will be for an economic development project, which will benefit the community of Sandusky. The proposed TRACS transfer will come back to the city commission one additional time in the near future by the Division of Liquor Control for one more step, where the city will indicate whether a hearing is requested prior to being authorized by the state, and ask the commission to consider a motion for that TRACS.
Requested a motion, would someone care to make that motion? Second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. Note the abstention by Commissioner Lloyd, please.
On the Fourth of July, there have historically been numerous complaints of fireworks being discharged in the city. Although it is legal to purchase fireworks, we just want to remind you that it's still illegal to discharge fireworks in the state of Ohio. Please be respectful to your neighbors, and extra patrols will be out this evening due to the large number of calls for service. Also for fire, Station Three, led by Community Impact Officer Jeff Danovich, has adopted Farwell Park. Every morning, they're cleaning up trash around the park, and on days that they can make it, they're interacting with the children that are attending the park program. So we thank the fire department for that additional service above and beyond the call of duty. Also for public works, the Sandusky Bay Initiative was featured on Detroit Public Television's Great Lakes Bureau Network, highlighting the key role that the city is playing in reducing the harmful algae bloom in Lake Erie and transforming Sandusky Bay into a cleaner, friendlier body of water. And a congratulations to Curtis Lofties, who has promoted from a Maintenance Two to a Maintenance Three position in water distribution. a Maintenance Three position in water distribution. Also, just to let folks know that Kocin plans to begin the next phase of Shoreline Drive between Jackson and Wayne Street tomorrow morning. Notifications have been sent to the state borderless, and I believe one lane of traffic, Aaron, will be continuing to be operated at all times, correct? The city's application with the Cedar Point Property Owners Association for buoys along the residential section of Cedar Point Beach was approved through ODNR's Navigational Aids Grant Program. And also, because of the very low unit prices received from Smithnuth paving on the sidewalk contract, there was still twenty thousand in available funding. Staff decided to do the southwest quadrant of Washington Park, which is the boy with the boot quadrant, rather than the northeast quadrant, because we had quite a bit more quantity, allowing for greater flexibility for future projects. Final qualities, or quantities will be presented in the final change order. Moving on to community development, Wisteria Farms, Garza Dirt Works has begun the second and final phase of demolition activities at the site. The work will entail scraping the entire hardscape surface from the approximate two-acre site, and remediating a small portion of contaminated soil. Once completed, the state of Ohio-owned site will be returned to a passive green space. Work is anticipated to be substantially completed by the end of next month. And for the planning department, the next Walk Wayne Hike Hancock event will be held July tenth from five to seven P.M. The walk areas include Wayne and Hancock Streets, between and including Monroe and Scott Streets. Also, a neighborhood ice cream social will be scheduled from July third from six to seven P.M. at the new Erie Boulevard Parklet, at the corner of Erie Boulevard and Cleveland Road, to help, you know, organize activities in that neighborhood. And also, we wanted to notify the Commission that the city will be issuing two requests for qualifications associated with Sandusky's Opportunity Zone designation. One will be for the physical master plan and policy recommendations within the zone, and the second will be a prospectus and marketing plan. When a consultant is selected, the contracts will come before the City Commission for approval. Also, advertising spaces are starting to fill up on the transit buses. Anyone interested in purchasing space on STS buses are encouraged to call our marketing partner, Mark Advertising, a Sandusky-based company, at four one nine six two six nine thousand for more details. There will also be a neighborhood cleanup on Saturday, June twenty-ninth at nine A.M. The cleanup will focus in the Sandusky Bay waterfront area from Meg Street to Shelby Street. And notification that the regular planning commission meeting, scheduled Wednesday, June twenty-sixth at four thirty P.M., will take place at two forty Columbus Avenue, which is the new City Hall in the new first-floor conference room. And the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, scheduled for Thursday, June twentieth, was canceled due to a lack of applications. The Landmarks Commission meeting, scheduled for Wednesday, July seventeenth at four thirty P.M., will also take place at the new City Hall in the first-floor conference room. And the Regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July sixteenth at five P.M., also at the new City Hall. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whittaker. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Chairman, it was brought to my attention for the last two years that sometimes, you know, on Fourth of July, fireworks kind of get out of control, and we all know that, everybody likes to have them. But in particular, on Hancock Street, the owners of the factory there, they, you know, there was a little bit too much fun. There was a fire started probably two years ago, and then this, ash left out, and I think things went a little bit further beyond than they should be. So perhaps we could, well, they've asked to have, you know, some presence from the police or someone out there to.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Lockhart, I know, and as the manager reports stated, we do have extra patrol, and I know that there are a lot of traditions of an active Fourth of July on Hancock Street, and so certainly, while the police try to allow folks to have fun, they also, I think, do pay extra attention, or a lot of the calls are coming from there. So I'm sure Lieutenant Dogren can take that back to Chief Orzak, if you don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
I don't know, maybe even if, if there could be some cruisers, or even the Fire Department just to prevent what could be a fire over that area, as it was before. They've expressed their concerns to me, even sent videos of last year, on Fourth of July. Like I said, everybody knows that the Fourth of July, everybody kind of, they're out there to have fun and things like that, but we want to make sure that they're safe, too. Factory there, there was a lot of trash, and a lot of people were even getting on the rooftops. No presence over there, you know, people kind of take things for granted. Fire Department could even put a truck there, or just, just to have somebody present, so that they can push them back.
all have a relative who've lost a finger or a hearing. Questions or comments for the City Manager? Mr. Waddington?
The downtown parking meeting is eight A.M. tomorrow.
Brady?
Mr. Whittaker, I think I know the answer to the question.
Oftentimes, the city provides a lot of money in grants. Where the project stalls, or fails, or doesn't come to fruition, for a variety of reasons. Can you, can you share with us how we get our money back, and that we do get our money back?
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Brady. Now, this has come up recently, as it relates to the article that was in the Register last week, as to the Cook Building. And we've actually spoken with Mr. Hoagriff very recently, and he continues to explore options, and just as the paper stated, there have no decisions have been made, and they really do hope to take that project to fruition. Others being cautious, but in the, in the event that people are receiving questions about that, the Commission did vote on a five hundred thousand dollar grant that I believe would still have to come back to the Commission, at least one more, not, not to come back, but the, but the specifics of that were one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that grant were specifically dedicated to be given to the developer, or granted to the developer upon the completion of the marketplace at Cook, which is completed, so they are, or will be due, that portion of the grant. But the additional three hundred and fifty thousand was for the completion of the Cook, and so should they not complete that portion, those funds would not be granted, and they could be reprogrammed by the city. But again, we're in very active and collegial conversations with Rick and Meg and Hoagriff, and, and they're still very committed to the area, and really just trying to find the best solution for the Cook. We've always known that was one of the tougher buildings in the city, and they've encountered some obstacles, as everyone knew they would, and ultimately, we're, we're working through those, and look forward to continuing that dialogue.
Unfortunate that they have stopped at the Cook Building, because, I mean, that's parking that's been taken up by the barricades. Do you have any, barricades will be removed, so that the folks can start parking back there again.
The Commission President to Commissioner Lockhart, our first concern is to secure the safety of the building, and they are actively having engineers evaluate the safety of the building. I think they're probably still weeks away from a very specific report, so while we would love to open up access, we want to make sure safety is first, and ultimately, we're going to, we're going to give the Hoagriff's the time they need to do the evaluation that they need to, and then we'll all have a lot more answers as to when either construction could commence, or alternatively, if it cannot, when we can safely provide access to the sidewalks and the parking again.
Mr. Poole?
Our grant program is designed that we pay.
Through, through the, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, we specifically, now, every, every grant agreement is different, but we specifically design them for the city to be the last money and to protect us to the extent possible. So they're not always identical, but in this case, you're exactly right, and, and that is our goal in every negotiation.
I fully understand, Chair, I understand that the concept of our money is the last
No questions or comments for the City Manager? Mr. Waddington?
I talked to you earlier about this today. I was on the Commission in '07, and we looked downtown in various places. The City Hall, and then again, it come up, I think in 2010, I think you were, all your efforts and being a bulldog, and I'm at a pinch-me moment sitting in this chair right
He's always the strongest man, so I wouldn't encourage pinching him. Stay away from that. He's still got a lot of strength. Additional questions for the City Manager? If not, then we will turn to public comment. Anyone having any public comments for the Commission, please step to the microphone and share with us your thoughts.
I'm Mr. Mayor, Tim Schwanger, three six two Sheffield Way, Sandusky. I had a couple of park issues that I wanted to talk about, but I'm going to hold off maybe until the next meeting. I want to talk a little bit about the pier track. There's not very many times that I disagree with Mr. Poole on, on issues, but this is one I'm going to have to disagree on the pier track. This issue's been before this Commission, previous Commission, since about nineteen eighty-eight. We've had surveys, we've had title searches, and, you know, at least four different times, and I don't know if that information is still in the law director's office, or if it's tucked away in a box somewhere out to the city service complex, but it's been proven time and time again that we own at least a portion of the pier track. We maintain the pier track in between certain termini. I like Mr. Brady's idea that if we, if we run into a stumbling, stumbling block, lawsuits are threatened, which they've always been threatened, five times, four times, that this has come up, let's find a way to get around it. And again, this is an issue that was talked about in public sessions at Quaker Steak and Loop, there was a couple of meetings at the Fire Station, and when the, during the public input session, and Michelle can attest to this, the public was given two different choices, either go down First Street, or go the pier track route, and overwhelmingly, the pier track route was the route that the public chose. And I completely understand the property owner's concerns. It's been shown time and time again, that pathways actually increase property values. It's, it's the old NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard sickness, or syndrome, if you will. One of the things that came out of that, those public sessions, was that, let's forget about the bridge. Let's forget about it. Let's just make that a node like we have at the end of Mill Street. The plan was to go Mill Street, east, over to King Street. We took that part out, we just created a node at the end of, at the end of Mill Street. So let's just create a node at the end of Ogot Street, because that's where, that's where the city owns, is from the end of Ogot Street to the Cove area where the boats go out of the Cove. Let's just improve that and call it a day. If you think about it, the people on First Street, the areas around First Street have no access whatsoever now, that they put up a gate across the end of McKeon Street two years ago. So let's just do the node, go around these people's property if we have to, and call it a day.
Nicholas McGookie, fourteen twenty-two Ogot Street. I just had a question about park maintenance, if there was a spot on the city website where we can see what maintenance is completed at the area parks, and how often they are, and wondering if we could get a couple more benches at the Sandusky Skate Park for families to enjoy.
Information you're looking for, you're not, I'm sure you're not asking about mowing, you're talking about larger projects?
No, I'm basically looking at, like, safety, if they, like, a nut and bolt check of equipment, how often that is done. I know we've had issues at the skate park of lack of maintenance, and I was just curious about the other parks as well.
Question, I know we do, I've seen it, we've got a schedule where we regularly inspect the equipment, I just don't know what that schedule is. Perhaps, perhaps you could provide your email to the Commission Clerk, and she could follow up with that schedule after the meeting, sir. If you have any particular concerns that you want to point out, it'd be very valuable
Greetings, everyone. Tom Lamarcas, two oh six forty-eighth Street. First off, congratulations on your new building. I recall this building nineteen seventy-five, when I had it listed for sale for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and the back wall was falling out, and it continued to deteriorate over the years, so great improvement. The audio and the setup, I'm not comfortable, and I don't know about these folks, but I'm not comfortable with them having their backs to us, and it's difficult to hear you folks when you speak, when we're sitting back there. So that's just an FYI for you there. My concerns are, the amount of goose crap we have around the Chesapeake Walkway. Now, I know it might be a chock of a sum, I don't know who's responsible for that, but when King Bear was residing at the Chesapeake, he would take it upon himself to police those sidewalks and keep them clear. I tend to walk it a couple times a week, and the amount of dew on the, on the walks on the east side today was, I'm going to say, light. The north end, medium. The west end, you couldn't get through it. You couldn't get through it. And it's been that way now for weeks. Again, I don't know who takes care of that, but, you know, we're trying to be the city of all cities, and I think that we've got a lot of people walking around downtown, from out of the area, I see them. Perhaps you folks don't, but I do, and they go out there, and they start walking, and there they are, they're stuck in a pile of crap. So, and, and I'm afraid that this might be the preamble to the proposed Jackson Street Pier development. Is this, is this how the Jackson Street Pier is going to be maintained, once and if that ever gets completed? And then, speaking of the Jackson Street Pier, it's, it's almost getting to be the mistake on the bay, because there's been no work on that project for months. I mean, months. And I don't want to hear that it's the weather, because we all know that there's bad weather, but many contractors throughout the state have continued to nibble and work on their projects and get things accomplished. We're getting nothing done here. You know, that jetty was a man-made jetty with fill, a hundred, a hundred-plus years ago, and it's a jetty that is surrounded by sheet pile and surrounded by Sandusky Bay. So any contractor worth his, worth his oats would have done enough core sampling or obvious observation that he or she's going to hit some water and have some problems here. So I'm concerned about that. I don't think there was enough forethought in the project, or the test pourings done, and quite frankly, if people hadn't spoken up at a previous City Commission meeting about the level of the floor of the proposed commercial building that's going to be thrown in there, that building would be under construction today on the flood tablet of the base of the parking lot. Now, somebody again is rushing ahead and trying to put a, push a project through, so now it went before the planning commission, and now that building that's going to be built at some time is going to be elevated twelve to eighteen inches to stay out of the water. Hopefully, it will. You know, we that live here, and Mr. Murray, you're familiar with the water levels, this is a twenty-year type of cycle, so we've seen this before, it's nothing new to us. So, you know, someone should be aware. I hope that Shoreline Drive project doesn't follow suit with the Jackson Street Pier project, because I noticed today someone finally started to do a little bit of work down at the west end of Shoreline Drive. But again, that project sat idle for weeks. I don't understand why these contractors are just working so lightly on these projects. I mean, eight million dollars for one stretch of, of road, and here we're doing a, we're talking about Meg Street for a million and a half, and it's... about Meg Street for a million and a half, and it's, I think that that's a longer stretch than what we're doing on Shoreline for eight million. So there's something there. The Cook Building unfortunately is really sagging, I've noticed that, and it's getting worse and worse, and I'm afraid that that building is going to bite the dust. I think that it wasn't taken care of for a long amount of time, and perhaps something wasn't done, and it's going to perhaps come down, and then we're going to have a parking lot. Granted, we need the parking, but it's a shame that we're losing the historical character of our downtown by losing these buildings one at a time. The charm and the character tend to go away when you start knocking them down like that. I want to congratulate the folks that put together the, the festival over the weekend. I thought, you know, there seemed to be a lot of activity, and people seemed to be enjoying it. Congratulations on their cleanup after the fact. It wasn't up to the level of what the folks did with Light Week, but still, they did a commendable job, and so I thank them for that. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Lamarka? Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Care to make a motion to adjourn? Stand adjourned.